City Council for August 11, 2015. The council met in closed session at four o'clock. The purpose was to evaluate the performance of the city manager pursuant to Government Code Section 54957. The council has no reportable action coming out of that session. I will however be making a statement on behalf of the council when we get to reports by staff and council in our six o'clock session. Let me begin with the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Doring, would you lead us in the pledge?
Ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on our agenda is roll call.
Mayor Galbraith.
Here.
Vice Mayor White.
Here.
Councilmember Kroll.
Here.
Doring.
Here.
Pitts, which is absent.
The next item would be public comments pertaining to the study session. Are there any public comments pertaining to our study session relating to a proposed hotel project at 1,000 Mills Lane before we hear from staff and then the project applicant or proponent, put it that way? Seeing none, we next go to the study session.
Mr. Mayor, if there may be one here.
Oh, yes.
Would you please take your time?
Okay, very good. State your name, please.
My name is Mary Stevenson. I'm a resident of St. Helena. And as a resident of St. Helena, looking at the conceptual plans for the hotel, I was very impressed with them. These are conceptual plans, et cetera, but I think it does fit in with the needs of the city in a way that impacts the city as little as possible. However, as a representative of our town, St. Helena, the local housing advocacy group, I see no affordable housing as a part of this plan. And I don't think that's right because there will be new employees coming in for this hotel with 80 rooms. I think that the Halls are really good people. They're great community members. They've done a lot for housing in St. Helena. They have actually purchased houses in Napa Valley for their employees and they support the work of our town, St. Helena. And I know that they will do everything that they have to do to provide, to pay the impact fees for housing for this project. The problem is, is it's not enough. So the city of St. Helena needs to do what it has to do to raise the impact fees and get more money for people who are coming in and putting in commercial developments so that we can house employees. We already have two employees for every person who lives in St. Helena. So 78% of our employee workforce is commuting into town now. We have, in 2016, we'll have 16, we'll have 22 fewer apartments in St. Helena than we did in 2000. And that's with the McCorkle, with the Turley project coming onboard. I can give you 10 houses that have sold in St. Helena in the last 18 months for less than a million dollars that are now either been sold or on the market now for 2 million and above. I could list those for you. And that's kind of the end of the spectrum. So we are losing our existing housing and we're not building anymore. And so it's time for us to do something about that. The other thing that I just found out today is there's an apartment complex in town that has six units, two were vacant, and the four other apartment dwellers who are local families who've lived there for a long time and work in local businesses got eviction notices at the first of the month to be out by the end of September because they're going to rehab the apartment and raise all the rents. So these things are happening and we're worried about our revenue and we're worried about, and we want projects like the Hall project, but the city needs to step up to the plate and get more involved in how we are going to bring these projects in and provide housing for the people that are going to live there. I would ask the Halls if they would provide some funding for six to eight to 10 new housing units in up Valley for the 20 employees, 20 new employees who are coming. But I would ask the council to put, agendacize in the very near future, a study group or some discussion about housing and how we as a community are going to not just build new housing, but maintain what we have today. Because if you take 20 new employees from, I'm finished, last sentence. If you take 20 new employees from Hall and the, probably the eight to 10 employees from the thing on Montevista, that's 30 more cars on the road coming into St. Helena to work because those people will not be able to live here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Pat, down St. Helena, I just want to say that I totally agree with everything Mary said, including her high regard for the Halls. Santa Rosa seems to be addressing this problem in a big way and I would recommend to this city council that you read the Santa Rosa Press Democrat, particularly today, and see the steps that they're taking to go forward with providing affordable housing, which we desperately need here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further public comment before we call on our planning director? I think you're up next, Mr. House.
Typically, I get the bad chair, but I think I got the bad mic tonight. The project before you, the council tonight, is a conceptual review of a proposed 80-room hotel development at 1,000 Mills Lane. It's very important to note that this is not an entitlement action and no policy or sequel analysis has been conducted. The proponent is seeking general guidance on design and other issues associated with development of a hotel and resort on the project site. It's emphasized that any comments made by the council are informational and non-binding as no environmental analysis or staff analysis has been conducted. So please keep comments general and focused on the concept of hotel development on the site and not specific to support of the specific project. Feel free to ask questions, of course. The staff report provides a little bit of history on the item. There's been previous hotel development proposed here but never approved. The conceptual design is for an agricultural themed resort on multiple parcels totaling about 10 acres. It's essentially an extension or proposed as an extension of the Farmstead Restaurant. And the preliminary presentation by Mr. Hall includes a project narrative, a context plan, conceptual site plan, renderings, and conceptual floor plans of the hotel rooms. Total amount of conditioned space is approximately 40,000 square feet with an additional 25,000 square feet of covered pavilions being proposed. And it's currently, the design currently identifies approximately 70 parking spaces. The site is designated for both service commercial and agricultural land uses by the general plan and zoning districts. Majority of the site is also within the urban limit line. The height of the proposed structures appear to be consistent with the 35-foot height limit. It's important to note that the project site was included in the 2005 Highway 29 specific plan and the use of the hotel is consistent with development anticipated by that plan. Should the, Mr. Hall choose to file applications, the entitlements required would be sequoia or environmental analysis, a use permit, design review, lot line adjustments, and likely a development agreement. A number of infrastructure improvements and specific issues are listed in the staff report. However, a couple key items to note are the realignment of Mills Lane with Grayson. Some improvements would be required to Lefata as well and some of the drainage infrastructure to address water at the intersection of Highway 12, I'm sorry, Highway 29 and Mills Lane would be important. There's a brief fiscal impact analysis in the staff report as well. And staff also included comments from the planning commission's review of, on September 2nd of 2014, of the conceptual hotel project that was previously brought before the council in a similar process or format. While the planning commission did not review this specific proposal due to time constraints, those comments were general enough that staff felt they were appropriate to provide to both the council and the applicant, so they are included in the staff report. With that, staff recommends that the council receive the presentation by the property owner and any comments from the public and then provide general feedback as to the appropriateness of a resort hotel on the property. And again, I'll just reiterate, reiterate that no analysis has been conducted. This review is purely conceptual and non-binding. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Any initial questions of staff by members of the council?
Just want to clarify, any comments that were received from the planning commission? I'm not sure I have those in my packet. I could be wrong, but I reviewed the packet thoroughly and I didn't see those. I reviewed mine online before I got my book, but does everybody else have those?
I thought it...
Comments from the planning commission is what you referred to, correct?
It's...
Oh, these, okay. I thought they were separate. Okay, I understand what you're, I thought they were letters from, apologize, thank you.
Okay. All right. These are comments that were made a year ago and they're in the staff report. Okay. Any other initial questions of staff? All right, let's hear from the proponent.
Well, good afternoon, everybody. We really appreciate you taking the time to consider this matter in a special study session. And city staff has been particularly accommodating to us to put us into this process so very quickly. We do face a significant decision. We have the opportunity to control this property, but without going through this kind of process to fully vet publicly what is on our minds, we still have the option of not proceeding. So our discussion and what we learned from you tonight and from members of the public are very important to us. I'd like to introduce my wife, Laddie, and our son, Chris, who are here with me today, our important advisor to our family business, John Scupney, and our friend and longstanding architect, Eric Hosloop, who's here in the, in the second row. If you would indulge me for just five minutes, I'd like to put this project in perspective because there's a certain underlying conceptual authenticity that I think is important to understand and what motivates us to want to do this. We came to the Valley more than 25 years ago where I had a great interest in making wine. And in fact, I've made my first wines in 1971, 44 years ago. But I was driven by experience as a child growing up on a small farm in western Pennsylvania where my mother had been a pioneer in organic farming. My grandfather had operated a grocery store and we provided produce for a portion of that grocery store. And so with my interest in wine, we came here with a vision of bringing our understanding of organic farming principles and sustainable farming and attempting to make elegant wines from mountain grown grapes, which we've had a chance to begin to do off the end of Whitehall Lane in the Mykonos Mountains. This was considered a really loopy idea. We were greeted with enormous skepticism and yet we knew in our hearts that this was a path for a better approach to agriculture and ultimately a more economic and higher quality way to making wine and actually growing other crops as well. So from the beginning, our motto was excellence through responsible farming. We realized early on that we needed to have crops more than just wine. We had the good fortune of discovering Napa County's first commercial olive orchard hidden in the forest on our property was planted in the 1870s, which allowed us to begin to expand the diversified nature of our activities by adding olive production and then olive oil in a small winery that actually Eric and his partner, Bill Turnbill, helped us design. Things evolved, but the, the next little stage was our son, Chris, with his brother, Tim, had the equivalent of a lemonade stand at the St. Helena Farmer's Market back in 1991. So we have been serving the community at the Farmer's Market for, this is our 25th year. But that gave us real insight into the fact that some of our products are olive oil and other fruits and vegetables could be grown responsibly on ground that probably shouldn't be in grapes. And we've evolved today to where we were a pretty complicated diversified agricultural operation. We grow grapes and make wine. We grow olives and make olive oil. We raise grain grass and produce grass-fed beef and lamb. We do organic fruits and vegetables, organic eggs and honey. And we've evolved to where we aspire to bring that to the market and also have people understand why products of this quality produced this way are attractive to them as consumers and buyers, but also how this is in fact a practical and economic way for providing for locally produced food. We tried to spread the word, if you will, through a roadside stand that we operated across from Gurgic Hills in Rutherford. Some of you probably were our customers in the mid 2000s. That proved to be challenging because traffic there drives by at about 55 miles an hour and by the time they know it's time to stop, they, they don't. And we also learned that this message that we were trying to carry was hard to explain and hard for people to understand without some direct ability to experience what we were purveying. So Farmstead grew out of that idea. We stumbled on the property being available in late of 2008. You all may remember 2008. Lehman Brothers had gone bankrupt. It was a pretty bad time. We were heading into the depth of the recession. The property at 738 Main Street had a failing nursery led by a wonderful man, our former fire chief, Kevin Tuohy, but, and a property that was horribly dilapidated. The historic Logan Ives House was rebuilt in 1874, was uninhabitable, had broken windows, was an eyesore for everybody entering here into, into town. And with some collaboration with Kevin and a little bit of vision, we undertook to acquire that property and bring to life a way of making real for people this idea of excellence through responsible farming. So, and to do it in a way that was focused on our local community. So it's also hard to remember what a scary decision that was. I remember us doing a concrete pour on the 4th of July at the property and every single member of the crew came up and shook my hand. They were working on a holiday and they told me that most of them hadn't worked in eight to 10 weeks. So we were driven by perhaps irrational vision and maybe not, certainly I'm experienced businessman and understand the underlying economics, but we probably accepted more risk and plunged in with both feet out of conviction for what we were doing as much as we thought there was an economic opportunity. Today, I think most of, all of us in the community recognize that we've been wonderfully supported by this community. It's a focal point for our town. Our afternoons are filled, our, our parking lot is filled with pickup trucks. And we think and believe that we are enabling a much larger group of people to understand diversified ag and responsible ag in a, in a very tangible and personal way. So it's no accident that the narrative is written the way it is, that this is an expansion of Farmstead at Long Manta Ranch and an opportunity for us to continue the agricultural activities and create agricultural experiences for our community and also for visitors to the community. And I really believe that given the historical nature of, of St. Helena's role in agriculture and in the Napa Valley, that I hope we are all pleased to have this symbol of agricultural origins right there on our, on our southern entrance. So while I understand why the materials are written the way they are and folks have referred to this as a hotel, we don't really think it is. We think it's the addition of lodging to Farmstead. And it's an important idea because what comes with a hotel are all sorts of public serving services, generally new food and beverage service. And what we're doing is enabling visitors to our town to have a more immersive experience in our farming activities. So I hope you will see that, this project in that light. It's actually a very straightforward project for us to get our minds around. If you turn to the site plan, the property that is familiar to you all as the Dumany property, which is 10 acres along Mills Lane and, and along Main Street, is a property that I'm sure you're also all familiar with, is owned by Dr. Gold. The large opportunity that we have is enabled by tentative agreement between the Gold family and our family to provide access to the Dumany property by executing a lot line adjustment. So if you look to the, to the lower left of the site plan, you can see existing Farmstead. You move a little bit to the right, you'll see a vertical rectangle which defines an area as a rectangle. And then there is a black dot on that. And that black dot, there's a similar black dot to the right, which is a square. And that's an equivalent exchange of property between ourselves and Dr. Gold. It has the benefit of enabling access to the service commercial portion of the property, which is where the lodging will be located. And then on the, how could that be? And on the portion of property that Dr. Gold is receiving in exchange from the Dumany property to the, on the, on the right, where the other black dot is, it enables a fee title access to Mills Lane, which has been a source of contention that has played out in these chambers many times over the last few years. What's interesting about those pieces of land, they also are both zoned ag, so it's an ag-for-ag swap. Further getting oriented on that property there, St. Helena zoning has a portion of the property zoned in ag. And the line that defines the agricultural zoning is the vertical dotted line. It actually, conceptually continues to the bottom of the exhibit through Dr. Gold's vineyard. So our plan is to expand our farming operation, our demonstration vegetable gardens and actual real production gardens throughout all of that agricultural area. So it's labeled there agricultural preserve. It's not a preserve in the land trust sense, but it is agricultural reserve as defined by the zoning of the city of St. Helena. We then are going to add lodging and the lodging experience to Farmstead to, on the service commercial zone portion to the, to the right. The significant insight in our plan here was the recognition that we could use existing city street, Lefata, which is where it says entry up in the far right-hand corner, where there's a 60-foot wide existing curbed street coming off of the commercial section of Dowdell, which would enable an entry, an entry circle that you see there and, and a reception building. I'll get into the buildings again in a, in a, in a moment. But the, the value of, of the Lefata entrance is this facility is not going to be serving the general public in the way many hotels would in that we're not having new food and beverage service. There's not a bar service there for, for third-party players. So a hotel, a lodging entrance of this kind doesn't really require a high level of invisible public access. And its most significant value is it will allow us to move forward with the proposed project without waiting for the completion of the channelization of Highway 29/Main Street and would permit safe and appropriate access to this portion of the property without the need for that to be the bottleneck, which is good for us as a business because time is money, as you all know, and it'll be good for the city because it will enable this project to be constructed in a way to more timely impact the city budget. So we'll move to the more detailed site plan unless there, anybody has a question at this point. Please to the next one. So for those of you that are close enough or have the document in front of you, there's a numbering system, the number one up at the upper right-hand corner, which designates the entry. Imagine a circular parking court, a valet parking, and then parking occurring in a commercial fruit orchard that we will plant that encompasses a really significant portion of the site with the car parked in spaces that are aligned along that driveway going up and down the page, parallel to Mills Lane. The building numbered, labeled number two is a reception administration area, think of it as the check-in. Building three is a multi-purpose barn, which will be a reflection of the barn that we have, the barn that we converted into the Farmstead Restaurant, all of which complies with the height limits of, of the city. Will, will be architecturally similar and will follow the similar color scheme. And then building number four to the left is tractor barn, tool shed for all of the gardening that will take place and farming that will take place on the, on the property. We also envision a gardening classroom in that, in that building. Other things to note are building number five, which is a small, a portion of that building will be dedicated to a spa. Number six is a pool. Number seven is a lawn. And then the remainder of the buildings are one-story units, which I'll show you in a little more depth later, all one-story units. This particular version of our plan shows the equivalent of 70 units. For conceptual purposes, we've thought we should discuss what we thought was probably the highest number that we could place in this, on this parcel, and that's probably 80 units. All of the pathways and surface areas will be very familiar to you, any of you that have been to Farmstead. The idea will be if you were on some other part of the property at Farmstead and you ended up on this part of the property, Farmstead, you'd think you were in the same place. So in terms of, we're kind of unique in this regard, the, the design review will be very tangible. We can go stand there and look at what we've done. There's several other place markers here, placeholders. There's a hammerhead out in the ag area for fire department, but at that hammerhead in the, the middle left are three representative structures, a smokehouse, a dehydrator, and... the, the middle left are three representative structures, a smokehouse, a dehydrator, and a greenhouse. They may ultimately be located in a, in slightly different configuration, but they're illustrative of the kind of experience we'd like to bring to both our community, but also to visitors where they get a more in-depth understanding of the way of food and comes from the farm to the table. Can we have the next slide, please? So these are, we'll go through these quickly. They are illustrative renderings. Those of you that have been on the patio or the private patio at Farmstead recognize the sun shaded areas. You'll even recognize the consistency of the furniture. This is looking up the middle of the, the plan. Could we go back one slide for a moment? What's also important, the way we've designed this, is that all of the activity that would be occurring for, among people that are staying in the lodge, it's contained in the center courtyard. So in terms of noise or any other kind of activity, there's not only the physical buffer of the ag area to the left, but there's also the building buffer that keeps all of that focused, which provides some level of intimacy to, to, to guests, but also means that there's likely to be very little disruption to the neighbor. The same thing applies to the north or the top, it's actually the east, where the Stanton family has its vineyard. There's several important points to make. There are, are two low buildings that are between number two and number three and number three and number four. The way to envision that is think of them as open sheds or storage sheds that have a wall facing into the courtyard, which provide a barrier and enable the, the activities behind those buildings to be shaded from the, the guests. So there would be no really direct exposure, for example, to farming activities on the Stanton Vineyard by, by the, by the guests. And we have reached an understanding that we would build an appropriate fence along that entire eastern border. So if there were guests that were confused about what farm they were on, they'd know to stay on, on this one and not wander off to the Stanton's. If we could go forward, then one more, please. So this is the area that identified as the fire pit. You'll recognize if you've been to Farmstead our anorak chairs. This is an illustration of the kind of social gathering spot may also be, may double as a live-fire cooking station as we've done at Farmstead if somebody's having a, an anniversary party or a birthday. Next slide, please. This is looking up through the courtyard. You see the larger building in the far end, which is hard to see. We don't have a rendering of the proposed barn, but that's its location. Next slide, please. And this is a, a walkway between the two different types of buildings. Next slide. The pool, anorak chairs, of course, be appropriately fenced for child safety. And you can see as you're looking down through the, this, in this direction, you're looking towards Dr. Gold's barn. This is towards the west, towards the Mykomis Mountains. And you can see there, there are two groups of shaded seating areas. Next slide. Another examples, next slide. More detail than you need. These, this is an example of, of a structure that contains 12 units. Is that right? Yeah, 12 units. The standard unit is 400 square feet. Because we live in a wonderful place and we all know, we sit outside on the patio at Farmstead, it's a wonderful place. We have 250 feet of, square feet of, of outdoor covered experience. We don't envision a, sort of a frou-frou experience. So all of these rooms are currently designed as being identical, all with king beds, and so that it makes the administration of the, of our lodging easier and also create a consistent experience for people to come wherever they're staying. And then there's another version of this, which is, go to the next slide, which is the, the smaller unit that was along the end. So we go all the way back to the next, all the way back to the top, please? Yeah. Okay, and then move one forward. So the buildings you've just seen are easiest to understand. If you look at the bottom of the slide, the, you'll see a, a building that is running horizontally, and that was the first floor plan that I showed you. And then an example of a building that's running, that's the, not a doubled unit, would be the, the ones immediately to the, to the right up the, up the pathway there. I should comment, as you've seen in the, in the write-up, we think that as part of this educational mission, that we will operate some onsite seasonally appropriate education programs and at, at small scale, not unlike what we're doing already, up to 25 people. And we'll focus on things like culinary skills that are appropriate to the farm, nose-to-tail butchery, cooking with live fire, how to do charcuterie at home, similar topics in animal husbandry, farmhouse crafts. We already teach an occasional course on, for example, pickling. And we would see that this multi-purpose barn would be a wonderful way to accomplish that. The major issues that we need some assurance, or we're going to have to reach on our own, but major issues that really make this project work are comfort that the La Fata entrance makes sense. We do need potable water. We will use existing well for all farming irrigation as well as landscape irrigation, but the existing well is quite high in arsenic. And we would need, we estimate approximately four and a half acre feet of, of potable water to enable this project. I would emphasize that because this is a reflection of our vision that we will employ the kind of sustainable, not only farming practices, but also conservation practices that we're, we've established. We're in the process of, our winery, existing winery is renowned for its energy efficiency and innovation in that regard. We also see this project as an opportunity to bring new ideas of energy efficiency, potential cogeneration, salt-based pool and spa systems, in other words, no chlorine, and some other innovative ideas that we're working on in a new winery that we're contemplating in, in Rutherford. Subject to an ultimate decision about whether or not a, a, the extent to which the sequo analysis needs to be conducted, which is a big open issue, and we recognize we'd have to work through it. But this project's very simple to construct. There are no new engineering feats that need to be accomplished. The project is straightforward agricultural architecture. We're on flat ground. We're farming part of it now already, which means that if we could reach a development agreement promptly, we should be able to put forward documents for building permit and begin construction in the fall of 2016, which is just around the corner. And if we were to do that, our best estimate is we could actually be open early in 2018. As you've seen in the documents, that would bring a meaningful revenue stream to the, to the city. Why don't I stop there? I'm sure there are other topics that I haven't covered that you'd like me to comment on, but thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions by members of the council, Mr. Hall?
You know, I, I just want to announce to the public, I've had a conversation with Mr. Hall. We've had, we went over some of the issues of concern. One of them I expressed was housing. And maybe you could tell us, talk to us a little bit about that in response to Ms. Stevenson's comments.
Well, we're very sympathetic to the need. We recognized beginning seven years ago that for us to attract mid-level managers, our farm production manager, that we were going to have to find a way to provide housing here in the valley. Our company, not, our family-owned company owns nine employee housing units. We have four in Yonville, four in the county, and one here in St. Helena. And so we've kind of put our money where our mouth is on, on this one. We're perfectly comfortable with paying the housing impact fee. And if the council would like to see the housing impact fee be moved to a specific project or to work with our town, I'm perfectly prepared to do that. But whatever we do and the scale of whatever we do, I think needs to be judged by some objective criteria. So there's a notion of when's enough is enough, but we understand that. One of the, if I put my city hat on, one of the huge advantages of this project as we proposed it is it's about the biggest bang we could get for the lowest amount of incremental employment. Because we have all the food and beverage staff, we have the sales and marketing team, we have the farm production team, they're all in place. We have an existing lease for employee parking behind Constellation Brands that we leased from Dick Bradley. We paid the fees and, and led the charge to enable the construction of the lighted crosswalk, which benefits the high school, but also allows our employees to go there. We would continue to use that parking lot, so we're not disrupting any neighborhood with the employee part of it. And because we have all of that, we're basically looking at the administration of the lodging component itself. So think of check-in and lodging management and then housekeeping. And I did have a conversation earlier today, and you know, our best estimate is we need 15 more employees, but you call it 20, it's, it's not 100, which, what you would get if we'd had a full food and beverage kind of operation. So it makes a lot of sense for our business and our existing employees because they have this larger footprint and greater assurance of underlying revenue and we're not impacting very much. So I think we need more affordable housing.
Let me just switch gears. Thank you for your comments. Maybe I don't understand it fully, but the idea is that your guests and service people would be using Dowdell to get to La Fata?
Correct.
I don't know if this is a, something that's within your knowledge or not, but are there improvements that need to be made for Dowdell? Because I understood that all the development out there has triggered funds going into some kind of a left-turn lane or something like that that are in the city account, that improvements need to be made to Dowdell. I could be wrong, but I understood that. And then I, I'm not sure how easy that is. I understand your timing, that you think you may be quicker, but I'm, I'm wondering from staff if you know about that, that issue on Dowdell.
I can speak to it a little bit.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't have any specific knowledge and we haven't reviewed any application from the applicant, so not really prepared that kind of detail.
So the, the channelization will lead to a continuous three-lane entrance to the city. So the issue of the left-hand, left-turn lane is being resolved by the current construction.
Right.
The real attractiveness of Dowdell as an entry point is a protected railroad crossing. So we have the, the automated crossing gates already in place. The, the actual highway across the railroad tracks has just been upgraded. And there are no residents on that section of Dowdell from Main Street to La Fata. So it's an existing commercial-serving street and has the further benefit of some of the visitor traffic that'll be occurring will probably be off-peak relative to whatever commercial traffic's there. So again, if we were to pick a spot that was going to have the least impact, this is, would probably make the list.
Well, maybe something to check into the city's records to see if there's an existing account from some of those other properties. I don't know for sure. We talked in our conversation about parking and you corrected me in terms of the parking issues at, at Farmstead being in, in your mind minimal, and I, I don't know, I don't disbelieve you. I'm just wanting to make sure that the parking is integrated, that there's not more parking issues or more burden on the Farmstead parking lot. And I just wanted you to talk a little bit about how the parking is spread out throughout the, the property the best you can.
Sure, sure. A couple ways to answer it. First is if you think about it, if we're taking reservations in the restaurant and we're filling a seat, if they're parked in, in the lodging, that's one less car that's going to come to the parking lot. And if that's times 70 a day, that means there's 70 fewer cars coming to the parking lot. Second is we keep, you know, I, I think you guys understand what we do. I mean, we, we have a log of every complaint we've ever gotten. And we have had three complaints about parking in the last three years. And we have a, a parking lot that functions effectively, but on peak days, we offer free public parking, a free valet parking, and then we use the off-site, off-site lot to accommodate that. So we openly subsidize, if you will, the minimization of any impact on the street. The business across the street doesn't do that. We park a lot of cars for them for free, but we just try to be good citizen and, and accommodate. We've also done a slight reconfiguration of our parking lot recently that our son Chris figured out that brought us how many net new parking spots?
Eight.
Yeah, brought, brought us eight new parking spots by simply moving a few pots and restriping, and it's working great. And it's pretty much alleviated any of the, any of the issues, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions of Mr. Hall before we open up the council discussion? Thank you very much, Mr. Hall.
Thank you.
Enjoyed the presentation. At this point, I'm going to close the public hearing.
We'll have to speak.
Yes, sure, come forward, please. I guess we had a public comment period beforehand, but I'll, I...
I'm sorry, I thought we, there was an open comment.
Yes, go ahead.
I just want to say, David Gold, 584 Main Street.
Yes.
And just a couple of quick things. First one is, remember the specific plan is the overriding planning document for that, and there is an environmental impact report that goes with that. So probably a fair amount of your secret stuff is taken care of in there. Second thing is Ted and I and the family have been talking about moving things around, and we're still in open discussion. And probably I've been one of the people that have been involved in a, of slowing down a lot of projects because of how they were presented and what they were planning on doing. And this seems about the lowest impact of the lot. And so I've never opposed development of that property ever, just that it fits into the specific, the Highway 29 specific plan, which the halls are doing. So thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. Anybody else? All right, I'll close the public hearing and invite the council discussion. Who would like to lead off? Mr. White?
And I will also disclose that I have spoke with Ted and Chris about this project. I was, you know, on the council when, when Carl Dumany had put his plan forward and, and I was... and I was in, I think agreement that, that that was a good hotel site, and that we were looking forward to seeing a plan come back to us, or go, or go forward to the planning commission and get, get a use permit. And actually, I think this plan has, has greatly improved on what Carl Domeny had. I think it, it takes care of a lot of the comments and questions that some of the neighbors had, especially the, you know, I know Doug Stanton here had, had questions about, or concerns about lighting coming from the parking lot which faced directly into his house, and this eliminates that problem. And also, it alleviates the, the questions that, that are concerns that Dr. Gold had. So I'm, I'm in favor of this moving forward. I think at a 30,000-foot level, we need to, I guess, agree that, that the city will provide the, the domestic waters to the project, and, and I think that's a discussion that we need to have. I'm, I'm in favor of, of a new hotel project that, that will bring, you know, new revenue into the city, and I know that we've talked about it a number of times, and, and we do have to provide water for the projects that come before us, and, and I think this makes a lot of sense, so I'd like to see us move forward with this and give it a push.
Well, I'm a big fan of Farmstead. I think Farmstead's had a really positive influence on our town, both locals and visitors, and I have a huge amount of respect for the halls and their hard work. I think, I think this is an excellent project. I wish, wish we'd thought of it a couple of years ago. I love the idea that this is more than just a hotel. It's a little bit reminding me of the Blackberry Farm in Tennessee. So it's really a, a more-than-hotel, it's a reason for visitors to come to St. Helena and experience things and learn things. I'm hoping there's, locals can take some of those classes, too. So I am, I am very, very much in favor of this project. I think it would be a perfect, perfect fit for the site and for our town. I love the fact that, that Dr. Gold seems to embrace the project. I've, I'm one of the council members that sat through a lot of contentiousness, and I'm really glad that it's all being worked out. And I just think this would be a really great project. We desperate, I've been the one saying we desperately need another hotel here, because it's the best kind of revenue, the TOT revenue. It stays right in our town, and I really believe that this project could come to fruition in a much more timely manner than any other project could, so I would definitely support this project.
I assume you mean going forward with the reviews and that kind of thing?
Right, right, right.
Okay.
We're strictly at the conceptual stage here.
Right, the conceptual, I'm conceptually in favor of this project.
Very good. Mr. Doring?
I think I would be repeating most of what my co-council members have said. I'm supportive of the conceptual plan, for sure. It's an exciting project. Well, of course, a lot of interesting issues with traffic and water, water the big one. But I think it's pretty much, from my perspective, I would give a green light to going forward with it, very positive. And I started out with questions that kind of, you know, poked at you, and I didn't mean to do it that way, but I'm in favor of, of exploring a, a deal as we go forward. Thanks.
All right, my turn. And we are at the conceptual stage. We're not permitted at this point to make any commitments. What I see is a project, conceptually, that is an exceptionally good fit for the city of St. Helena, and is an augmentation of a successful Farmstead that all of us enjoy. And I'm impressed with the fact that this project does likely minimize the impacts that could otherwise be experienced from a hotel project, with all of us, I think, acknowledging that a hotel project is consistent with the Highway 29 specific plan. I see this project as in the public interest of the city, and I think I am likely to appro, I am, I have an open mind, let me put it that way, with approaching the water issue with the notion that this project and the way it's designed, and given the fact that it's complimentary, is in the public interest, and I would, I would have an open mind as to looking at the water issue in that light. Any other comment? I think we're at the end of our hearing on this one. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Well done, thank you.
Yeah, we'll take a five-minute break before we come back in regular session. And five minutes for us means 10 minutes.
Don't say that. That'll mean 15.
Good evening. I'm convening our 6:00 PM session. It's 6:10. We had a 5:00 PM session that went close to 6:00, and we begin our 6:00 PM session with a public comment.
Mr. Mayor, if I might add a comment, that Mr. Pitts is on the line now. He's joining the meeting.
Okay, very good, yes. Thank you very much. And public comment is on matters not on our agenda this evening.
Hi, again, my name is Pat Dell, and the reason I'm here is actually to review a little bit of the requirements for inspecting the flood control project. I've had reason, cause, recently to go through those documents, and I came on this particular document that's part of a presentation that John Fahrens did in January of 2012 here. It was a PowerPoint presentation, really excellent presentation on the flood control project. On the last three pages, there's a full page on levee maintenance, flood wall maintenance, and storm drain maintenance, and the city is responsible to ensure that those things happen. I've never heard about any of them happening, and I think I mentioned to Mr. Fahrens before he left, that I would like to see a record of those things having been done. And we all know that should there be a levee failure, as some people think there might be, I don't, but some people do, and the city hasn't done these things, you're in serious liability problems. So anyway, I'd like to pass these over to Mr. Palmer.
Go ahead.
He may already have them, but this is a really shorthand way to do it, and request that you somehow publish. In fact, it would be good if you did it on the city website, your record of having done those, those maintenance things. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Dell. Any other?
Thank you.
Any other person wishing to speak at public forum? All right, seeing none. The next item on our, on our agenda is reports by staff and city council, future agenda items, and AB 1234 reports. Let me begin with you, Ms. Phillips.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I do have one item. I wanted to take the opportunity to thank the St. Helena Police Officers Association for assisting the city, and one of their fellow officers in a payroll matter. As I've shared with the council and the community many times, running a small city is no less complicated than running any of the larger cities. The laws and regulations and guidelines by which we are required to operate, all of our financial operations are just as complicated for us in a small city as they are for a large city. This past year, the city also worked diligently to implement quality policies and procedures. We also expanded our financial software program, and we've had to implement many new employment laws, especially related to PERS and PEPRA. An example of a very complicated employment law is PERS. Annual formulas are given to us by PERS, and many agencies, including St. Helena, now have three tiers of employees. And so the formulas for each of our employees for those tiers are different, and they have to be properly calculated and then put into the annual payroll system. We recently discovered a miscalculation for our police officers, and one in particular who was a newer officer who falls under the PEPRA legislation. And so I want to thank the POA really heartfelt for both Director Mitz and I. We worked together with them, we addressed what the issue was, and they stepped forward and assisted their officer in, in the payroll matter. This is really what teamwork is all about. I'm very grateful to the POA, grateful to the finance team for finding the miscalculation. We're correcting it and moving forward, and I just wanted to, again, acknowledge the POA for their, their support of their own officer, but also working so positively and collaboratively with us.
Thank you very much. Ms.
I just wanted to let everybody know that the auditors are here, so as you're all aware, we did retain a new auditing firm for our annual CAFER. So this is the week that they're here for their fieldwork, so if anyone tries to get ahold of me and I don't respond quickly, I apologize. They are here all week. They will continue doing audit work remotely, and then they'll come back for their second round of audit fieldwork, probably, I'm estimating, in October, so we can get our final CAFER done by December 31st.
Okay, good. Ms. Black?
I would just like to hopefully encourage more people to turn in applications for sustainability, multicultural, or active transportation committees. So we're still taking applications, we're going to be bringing it back to council, the first meeting in September, so please help me out.
All right, very good. Mr. Brown?
Nothing.
All right. Mr. Palmer? Mr. House?
I would just like to announce that the planning department is, is planning on holding a town hall meeting regarding short-term rentals here on September 23rd from 5:00 to 7:00. We have set that date formally, although we have not begun to notify through any other mechanism, but I just wanted to announce it today because we have set the date, and any interested parties can expect to get notification through the typical processes, as well as they could contact me directly. My contact information's available on the website, and I can add you to a direct mailing list for that. Thank you very much.
All right. Let's see, members of the council. How about Mr. Pitts? Does he have anything?
Uh, no, no, nothing yet.
Okay, Mr. Doring?
I have nothing to report right now.
Mr. White? Ms. Paul?
No.
All right. At the beginning of our session here, I advised that I would have a statement to be issued on behalf of the council regarding our city manager and city government. Here is the statement. The city council met this afternoon in closed session to evaluate the performance of the city manager. The city manager has the authority and responsibility to manage all city operations. The council understands that she can do so only through a management team that works collaboratively to achieve city goals as set forth by the council. We evaluate our city manager on that basis. Based on its evaluation, the council, following today's review, expresses its full confidence in Ms. Phillips and in the first-rate management team that she has assembled. The council is firmly of the view that Ms. Phillips provides the management leadership that the city needs to address our wide range of issues. The council very much looks forward to working with the city manager and her team in implementation of council policy directions as we move forward. And I should have said at the beginning that the statement is being issued on behalf of a unanimous city council. Now, the next item on our agenda is item 11, and it's proclamation, and I understand there's nobody here to receive the proclamation, so that being the case, I think I'll just read it from here rather than go to the podium. And so, the first proclamation is proclaiming September as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids Cancer Connection report cancer is the leading cause of death by disease among U.S. children between infancy and age 15, this tragic disease is detected in more than 15,000 of our country's young people each and every year. Whereas one in five of our nation's children loses his or her battle with cancer, many infants, children, and teens will suffer from long-term effects of comprehensive treatment, including secondary cancers. And whereas founded over 20 years ago by Stephen Feierstein, a member of the philanthropic Max Factor Cosmetics family, the American Cancer Fund for Children, Inc., and Kids Cancer Connection, Inc., are dedicated to helping these children and their families. And whereas the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids Cancer Connection provide a variety of vital patient psychosocial services to children undergoing cancer treatment at Lucille Packard Children's Hospital at Stanford in Palo Alto, UCSF Benioff Children's Hospital, as well as participating hospitals throughout the country, thereby enhancing the quality of life for these children and their families. And whereas the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids Cancer Connection also sponsor courageous kid recognition awards ceremonies, community get well cards, and hospital celebrations in honor of a child's determination and bravery to fight the battle against childhood cancer. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Alan Galbraith, mayor of the city of St. Helena, along with the St. Helena City Council, do hereby proclaim September as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in the city of St. Helena. I also call upon the citizens, community agencies, faith groups, medical facilities, and businesses in St. Helena to commit ourselves and our community to increasing prevention, awareness, and understanding of childhood cancer. Second proclamation is proclaiming October as Manufacturing Awareness and Appreciation Month. Whereas Manufacturing Day is celebrated nationally on the first Friday of the month of October to showcase manufacturers' increased awareness of manufacturing careers, whereas manufacturing jobs are critical to the economy and provide living wages with long-term career opportunities, whereas manufacturing sector includes food processing, milk processing, beverage manufacturing, nut processing, paper products, food packaging, plastic products, steel products, et cetera, and are the backbone of the economy. Whereas increasing awareness among students, parents, and community of local manufacturing careers is essential to encouraging manufacturing pathways, whereas increasing opportunities for all to gain knowledge of the manufacturing careers within their immediate surroundings, whereas coordinated and aligned efforts of public and private organizations is needed to collectively address the challenges of the skilled labor shortage, whereas filling skilled labor shortage requires aligning and leveraging the efforts of public, private, nonprofit organizations. Whereas by working together with manufacturers, educational systems, workforce investment board, Economic Development Corporation, Chamber of Commerce, and other public and private organizations, a skilled labor shortage for short-term can be solved, and long-term solutions can be developed. Whereas showcasing the regional development manufacturing, to manufacturing in the Napa Valley will encourage local expansion and attraction from other markets. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Alan Galbraith, mayor of the city of St. Helena, along with the St. Helena City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of October as the Manufacturing Awareness and Appreciation Month. Okay, very good. Whew. Okay, the next item on.
I'm going to have to read all these consent items.
Now, consent items.
It's beginning so early. It's not until October.
Very efficient staff. Okay, consent items. Now, let me stress here, as I go through this, any member of the council, or any member of the public, can pull an item from the consent calendar, and if that happens, we'll go through the normal routine of a staff report, et cetera. So I'm going to go through these and speak up if, if you wish to have the item pulled. Number 13. Consideration and proposed approval of special and regular meeting minutes of, special goal-setting meeting minutes of February 27, 2015, regular meeting minutes of March 10, 2015. Cindy Black is breathing a sigh of relief. Okay. 14. Consideration and proposed resolution approving the use of Lyman Park on September 16, 2015, for the Mexican Independence Day celebration event by the St. Helena Multicultural Committee. 15. Consideration and proposed resolution approving a professional services agreement with Muni Services for a vacation rental discovery and review program for a cost not to exceed $2,000 for travel and out-of-pocket expenses, and a contingency fee of 45% of the additional revenue received by the city from their services. 16. Consideration Consideration and proposed resolution awarding and approving a construction contract not to exceed $175,000 with GD Nielsen Construction, Inc. for the St. Helena Sewer Water, Stormwater, and Service-on-Call Contract for the year 2015. 17. Consideration and proposed resolution finding an exemption from SEQA, approving and adopting the project manual, and authorizing the bid request for Bell Canyon Reservoir, install new frame and sluice gate on water intake power, CIP Project W-84. 18. And let me say, I'm very pleased to see that one on the consent calendar. 18. Consideration and proposed resolution approving master professional service agreements with 15 consultants to provide professional services for capital improvement project delivery. The abbreviation for master professional service agreements is MPSA. The MPSA does not authorize or guarantee work for consultants. 19. Consideration and proposed resolution identifying the terms and conditions for fire department response away from their official duty station and assigned to an emergency incident. 20. Consideration and proposed resolution urging the state to provide new sustainable funding for state and local transportation infrastructure. That's a resolution urged on us by the League of California Cities, and it certainly exceeds any length that we allow here, but it's a good resolution. Any of that. Seeing that nobody has pulled anything from the consent calendar, the chair will entertain a motion--
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
All right. Ms. Black?
Ms. Dory?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Ms. Pitts?
Yes.
Yes. All right. New business. Item 21 was pulled by the applicant. So, that takes us to item 22. Conservation and proposed resolution adopting a water conservation code enforcement policy designating the Water Conservation Program Manager as a code enforcement official for water-related violations and specifying all water waste fines collected be used for the Water Conservation Program. Mr. Palmer, you're designated as lead staff on this one.
Yes, and the Water Conservation Coordinator Jennifer Tool is going to present the staff report.
Okay, very good. Ms. Tool?
Good evening.
Welcome.
So, before you today, we're looking at three items within the same resolution. It's adoption of the Water Conservation Enforcement Policy, designation of the Water Conservation Program Manager as a code enforcement official. And with that, the current St. Helena Municipal Code does designate several positions as code enforcement officials, but the Water Conservation Program Manager is not one of those positions. And then reallocation of any fines collected back into the program. So, just a little bit of background. In July, the municipal code was amended to be in compliance with the State of California drought regulations, and we have adopted those, and those take effect in August. And it also, when we updated the ordinance, it specified that the Director of Public Works could designate the days for watering. I'll go into that in just a minute. So, the goals of this resolution is, and the Water Conservation Program, is to support the statewide goal of a 25% reduction in water use, and we are currently meeting that goal. The program, I'm focusing on creating a multifaceted outreach strategy that really focuses on education, and a small portion of that will be fines, and that is what the policy will include. But really, the first and foremost point of the Water Conservation Program is to educate the public and to gain compliance by education. In the policy, I wanted to create an understandable, clear, and transparent code enforcement policy. Some of the current conservation measures which were adopted last July include no watering from 8:00 to 8:00, outdoor irrigation limited to only two days a week for ornamental and turf landscapes, avoiding water runoff, using automatic shut-off nozzle for washing vehicles, and then there's several others, and this is just a highlight of some of the items in the policy. The proposed policy before you tonight, like I mentioned before, is focusing on education. And in the current municipal code, violations can be fined at a single address per property, per occurrence, per day. So, one address could actually have multiple violations in a given day. And the way that the municipal code is written is that we could fine the property owner or responsible party per occurrence, per day that that's occurring. And all notices and violations will be in accordance with the standard code enforcement So, one of the items in the policy is discussing watering. We are proposing splitting the city between east and west. So, the east side of the city only being allowed to water on Saturdays and Wednesdays, and the west side of the city being allowed to water on Friday and Tuesday, with an exception for any geographical area that the director deems appropriate. And one of those would be Spring Mountain Road. And in the policy, it states that we would contact each owner directly to let them know what days they're allowed to water. The proposed penalties, again, this is education-focused, so in most cases, a warning notice will be given, and then the property owner or responsible party would be given 24 hours to remedy the problem and then report back or establish a voluntary compliance agreement. So, if they have a broken irrigation system and they need to get their landscaper out there, but it may take three days, as long as they have come to us and said, "We understand we have a problem. We are working on it. This is our plan," then that's fine. That is what the voluntary compliance agreement is about. However, if they do not contact us and do not establish a compliance agreement, that's where the fines and penalties start coming in. So, the second notice, it would be a $200 fine. And again, it's very similar to the warning notice, 24 hours to remedy or report back. And also, the fines, as I mentioned before, can be per day, per violation, until corrected or an agreement is in place. The third notice, I'm proposing a $500 fine. And then the fourth notice would also be a $500 fine, continued daily fines per occurrence, and then turned over to the standard code enforcement policy, whether that's a hearing or prosecution. So, this resolution states that it's the adoption of the Water Conservation Enforcement Policy, designation of the Water Conservation Program Manager as a code enforcement official. And part of the reason is that we're asking for designation of that position as a code enforcement official is due to the limited staff available for code enforcement. And then reallocation of all the fines into the project account rather than going back into the general fund to support additional water conservation. Are there any questions related to this resolution or policy?
Are there any initial questions of Ms. Tool? No? All right.
My assumption is that with the notice program that you have developed or proposing, that each notice is based on a per occurrence. In other words, someone might have one occurrence and get a notice, and then they may have a completely separate issue. They would then get a first notice, correct?
Correct.
They wouldn't get a second notice.
So, if the first is an irrigation problem on the west side of their lawn, and they've corrected it, and then they have, they're washing their car without an automatic shut-off hose, those are two separate violations, and they could be issued a warning for each one separately.
With respect to the fines or monies that are recovered, what kinds of things would they go to? You said they would go back into the program. For what purposes? And the reason I ask that is I'm a little concerned, maybe not so concerned, that there's, you will be a code enforcement officer with sort of the power to fine, and yet those monies are going back into a program that you're managing. I'm concerned about the appearance. I'm not overly concerned about it, but I just want to make sure that we've thought through that issue.
And that's a very understandable question. The water conservation budget is very limited annually, and there's only so much you can do with a small budget. And rather than the funding going back into the general fund, I thought it was appropriate if those fines were collected to go back into the Water Conservation Program to help with education and also to purchase water conservation supplies. And that's some of the things that I'm currently looking into with the budget, is buying low-flow showerheads, aerators, shower timers, toilet die tabs. And at this point, it will take about 2/3 of my budget to buy approximately 500 of the larger items, once you price everything out. So--
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any further questions of staff?
I have a last question. I'm just thinking through the timing here, and it's a 24-hour turnaround to remedy the problem. Actually, two questions. I guess you can enter into the voluntary compliance agreement if it takes a few days, like you mentioned, to get someone out to fix the issue. Maybe there was, I know we had an issue where someone had a broken pipe underneath a tree that was really hard to uncover and establish, but I guess we can, again, deal with that with the voluntary compliance agreement. Do we have a draft of the voluntary compliance agreement, or is that going to be something that is just figured out on a face-by-face basis? That's my first question. Second question is, what if someone's on vacation for a week or two? Are they going to come back to, you know, potentially a thousand, just several thousand dollars' worth of fines if they hadn't actually received their notice or the notice is intended to be delivered, you know, via, you know, mail where they're signed for? How do we, how do we plan on sort of establishing when the notice is actually delivered?
Okay. So, the first question I heard was about the, if we have a drafted voluntary compliance agreement? Is that correct?
Yes. Or would it be established, or would it be sort of figured out on a face-by-face basis?
No, it will be a standard form, and I'm currently working with NOAA on bringing an updated code enforcement policy to city council. We're expecting that to come probably sometime in September.
Okay, all right. And the second question really is, how do we, how do we deal with a situation where, you know, if someone, say someone's on vacation for a week or two and something happens, how do we actually establish that the notice has been provided to them or been served, so to speak, and if they haven't received it? And could they, could they come home from their vacation to fines that have been racked up in, you know, thousands of dollars, because they haven't had an opportunity to enter into the voluntary compliance agreement?
So, that is something that I think could potentially be clarified in the policy as additional language that I'd be happy to add. So, I think the, the way that we would handle that is if we've made every effort-- if we've made every effort to contact them, and then they come to us with a reasonable explanation as to why they have not responded, that we would accommodate that. And I'm, I'm happy to add that language to the policy to clarify that.
And we, this has come up with second homeowners more frequently than, than people on vacation, and we've had, I can think of three times since I've been on the council where people have come asking for-- where people have come asking for relief, and it's, the result has been different, you know, based on the facts of the case. But see, I was wondering if there, if there's going to be some preferred method for people who, who aren't necessarily full-time residents to provide you with an email address or something where you can get in touch with them?
Well, and we use all that with utility billing. So, we have email addresses when people want to provide them. It's not a requirement. But if it is a second home, we do have a billing address and their phone numbers. So, we would reach out to people in all ways that we could.
Actually, if I could add, I was just going to suggest, maybe that's something we could discuss with the overall code enforcement policy that you've been working on with the planning director, and that way, it's more of a citywide policy for all code enforcement, not just water conservation.
Yeah, I mean, at some point, I'm old-fashioned, but certified mail and registered mail, you know, works pretty well. All right. Any other questions of staff? Thank you very much, Ms. Tool. Any further discussion?
Thank you.
Oh, public comment, yeah. Any public comment? Yes. Thank you, Mr. White.
Yeah, I'm Bobby Monette. I'm speaking as a citizen. I have three questions. The first one, you mentioned that we are, our 25% reduction is, you're following that, the city is following that. And I thought that we traded that for the two times a week, but is this for something other than the, the citizen irrigation? I don't know if that's clear, if my question is clear.
Well, I think the short answer to that one is that the two times a week is what's required of us by the state, but having said that, we are in fact experiencing a reduction in excess of 25%.
Okay, we're just noticing that. We're not having to do that. Because we did trade those--
That's right. But that's about all I can say, without Mr. Brown invoking the Brown Act.
Okay. Then my other, the other question, one of the other questions, is what will the education look like? You said there will be an education program. Is that going to be through flyers that go out with the water bill, or will there be town hall meetings, or do you know yet, or will you let us know? I'm not sure what--
Clearly, we're going to let you know. Is there anything further you would like to say on that, or has it remain a work in progress, and you'll have a report on that down the road?
Okay.
Water bill inserts are-- Come over to the microphone.
Okay. Then the other question was, will the enforcement be complaint-driven? Are you going to be also driving down the streets and looking at, you know, and checking things out, or is anyone going to be doing that? I'm not sure how, how it's going to be, how these things will be discovered.
Well, I think this may be a learning process as we go, but I'm confident the city will respond to complaints that come in.
I was just wondering if part of your job is going to be to be going around town between 8:00 and 8:00 and seeing if any, anybody's watering? I don't know.
The city has a public works department, and they, they keep their eyes out, too. So, I think, I think, I think there are a lot of eyes that are going to be looking at this.
I'm sure either Jennifer or myself would be happy to respond to that at some level, if you, if you'd like.
Sure, go ahead.
Do you want, do you want to take it?
Yeah. So, currently, there's a website called Save Our Water, which is a statewide educational outreach campaign, and they have just launched a website to report water wasters. And so, I'm working with them to be able to utilize that website as an easy interface for residents to contact us with water wasters. And yes, the entire public works crews are aware, and I'm already getting at least probably two to three photos from our crews every day of people demonstrating that they're either watering during 8:00 to 8:00, or there's water going on the sidewalk. So, I'm already getting that information from the crews, and I do anticipate doing some rounds at various times throughout the city.
And by the way, I might add very briefly that the public works crews are terrific in the sense that their goal is to work with the homeowner as quickly as possible, sometime going, sometimes going onto their property to, to stop the leaks. I mean, that's what they do. They're very oriented toward the customer. All right. Any further public comment? Thank you very much. Any further council discussion?
I think, I just want to say thank you, and I think you've done a great job in putting this together.
The one comment I would make is that we have to be sensitive, and I know we will be, with those residents who use well water to irrigate. I was just in a conversation today, and a gentleman was telling me he had a big leak on his property, and it was, you know, running towards a plumber, and I go, "Oh," and I teased him, "You're going to get, be getting a notice." He goes, "I don't use potable water. I'm not on the city water at all. Even though I live in the city, I'm on well water." And I said, "Oh, yep. Made an assumption there." So, I think we have to be careful, especially given the complaint-driven program that we have. We don't want people running around if there's, you know, I know the notice would be on the property owner, apparently, under this regime to say, "Well, I'm on a well." So--
I can actually address a little bit, if it's okay.
Sure.
This-- This, the Water Conservation Committee actually has already started compiling a list of residences we know are on irrigation wells, so that if those complaints come in, we can fend them off before they become an issue.
Okay. All right. Absent further discussion, other than for me to reiterate the fine presentation that we heard, if there's no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion to, to approve adopting a water conservation code enforcement policy, designating a water conservation program manager as a code enforcement official for water-related violations only, and specifying all water waste fines that are collected be used in support of the water conservation program.
Move to approve.
Second.
Ms. Black?
Vice Mayor White?
Yes.
Councilmember Kroll?
Yes.
Doring?
Yes.
Pitts?
Yes.
Mayor Galbraith?
Yes. Next item. Let me see where, let me see where I am here. Item twenty-three. Consideration and proposed resolution authorizing the city manager to submit an application for grant funds in the amount of $500,000 for the California River Parkway's Grant Program for the Upper York Creek Dam Removal and Ecosystem Restoration Project. Lead staff is April Mitz and Tracy Prokowsky. So Tracy, good, terrific.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. I'm here tonight to ask-
Welcome.
-to ask that you authorize a resolution for the city manager to be the authorized signature on a grant application for the California Rivers Parkway Program in the amount of $500,000 for the Upper York Creek Dam Removal and Ecosystem Restoration Project. The construction portion only of this project is estimated to be approximately $5.3 million. The city currently has bond funds and $1.78 million in other grants available for the project. However, we are still $1.5 million short, and if awarded, this grant will reduce the shortfall. Once all the funds are secured for the project, it will move to construction. The Upper York Creek Project will remove the existing earth and dam, stabilize the slope near Spring Mountain Road, construct a channel creek-to-aide-in-fish passage, such as for Steelhead, and restore the surrounding ecosystem. This grant will not be offered in the future, and $500,000 is the maximum requested amount. The application is seeking funds specifically for the dam removal, channel construction, and ecosystem restoration portions of the project. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any initial questions by council? All right, let me open it for public comment. Our public has mostly disappeared.
Tracy is still here.
All right, let me, let me close the, let me close the public hearing. Any council discussion?
I would just move to approve the, the recommended action.
Second.
All right, I don't even get in my favorite expression, the damn dam.
No, you could save that for the next time Tracy brings us some money.
All right, roll call.
I'm afraid that I missed the second.
I did. Thank you.
Vice Mayor White?
Yes.
Councilmember Doring?
Yes.
Kroll?
Yes.
Pitts?
Yes.
Mayor Galbraith?
Yes. Okay. Our next, next item is item twenty-four. Consideration to reaffirm watershed information and conservation council, affectionately known as the WIC, primary member Vice Mayor White, an appointed council member to the newly-formed alternate position. So, this one speaks for itself, but Vice Mayor, you wish to continue to serve?
Sure.
All right.
Yeah, actually, yeah.
And is there, and then among members of the council, the person that's been complaining the most about being left out is Mr. Doring, so I would certainly-
I would not.
-ask him to be the alternate.
I would not have calls, would be more interesting.
Are you prepared to be the alternate?
I am prepared to be the alternate.
And does anybody else wish to be the alternate? All right. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the Vice Mayor as the member and Paul Doring as the alternate.
So moved.
Second.
Ready for?
I, I moved.
And-
Then Paul was second.
And Councilmember Doring seconded.
Councilmember Kroll?
Yes.
Doring?
Yes.
Vice Mayor White?
Yes.
Councilmember Pitts?
Yes.
Mayor Galbraith?
Yes. And then the final item on the agenda is an item that I placed on the agenda. It says, "Consider formation of an ad hoc revenue source task force to evaluate possible additional revenue sources for the city." The staff report was written by Ms. Phillips, but basically, my thinking was, and I talked with Councilmember Pitts about this as well, I'm allowed to talk to one other person, the thinking is that we should have a task force, it would be an ad hoc committee, that it would report by the end of this year at the latest, and it perhaps should consist of two council members and five others, and, and then we invite applications, and then proceed at our next meeting with the discussion as to who the two council members might be, if that's suitable to the council, and who, we will see who applies, but I would hope that we would get a number of, of applications, both from the residential and business community, as we look at the long-term financial forecast, and then try and figure out what we need to do to keep our city sound. That's basically what I see happening here, including, obviously, we've specified that we want to look into a real property transfer tax. So the effort here is to, is to come up with a, with a report, I would think, not a long report, but it highlights and documents the issues and says, "How are we going to really resolve in a way that, that is likely to command reasonable consensus within the community?" That's what I see happening here. Mr. Pitts, do you have anything further to add to what I just said?
No, I think you, I think you summarized it perfectly. I, I would just like to add that I think it's important that we, we, we move forward and try to establish this and, and engage with members of, of the public, along with a couple of council members, to, you know, think out of the box and creatively, to, you know, with respect to additional long-term revenue streams that can be explored.
All right, so I think all we need here is direction to staff to proceed with the applicant, with the application process. Is that?
Do you want us to look at any, any specific sectors? Do you want, do you just want us to open up an application process? Do you want to give us any number to kind of work with, so we're-
Or do you want to have them come back at our first meeting in September with, with kind of the framework of what it would be, how we would form this, this committee? I mean, those are, I think that's kind of important, so people know what they're getting into.
Yeah, maybe that's a good idea, and then we can have the application process done pretty quickly after that first meeting into the second meeting, and as I look at the, as much as I'd like to get it going right now, the reality is that we're in the middle of August, and it's not going to capture a lot of attention until we, we come back after Labor Day. Time moves forward.
I know, and I'm trying to think if, if, if you, if we bring to you the, the foundation of the committee, that would be September eighth. If we advertise ten days, that would be enough, we could bring it back. So the second meeting in September is the 22nd, so we'd have to do a pretty quick and big campaign, so we can do that. That's, it's short, but we could do that.
Yeah, and I would assume that members of the City Council, perhaps members of the Planning Commission, would all give this a lot of thought and encourage those that they think could make a really constructive contribution to, to apply.
Do you have any sense of the number? Do you want staff to kind of take a look at the number?
Well, my, as I said, I was thinking of a committee of about seven, with two members of the City Council and five members of, of the public, of which staff might think in terms of whether one might be from the Planning Commission.
Okay. All right. Okay, we can work with that.
Okay, very good. With that, I think we've completed our business. Ms. Black says I have many documents to sign, and I brought a blue pen. Thank you very much, everybody. Thanks very much. And we, we're missing our second, our second meeting in August, so our next meeting will be the first, the second Tuesday in September.
Which is early, because the first Tuesday is September 1st.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, well, productive day.